So it's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of the January 25th regular meeting. All trustees in favor, please signify by raising your hand. And that's unanimous as all trustees present. Item five, public comment. A public comment on non agenda items. Again, we're limited to three minutes per speaker. Paul, do we have anyone waiting?
Yes, we have a Jill Tabor.
Okay. Hi, my name is Jill Tabor, J I L L T A B E R. I'm a mom to three kids, two of them attend Lewis and Clark Elementary. I'm also a candidate for M C P S School Board. I won't stop speaking up about the district mask mandate because the mandate has run its course. This week, several states have announced ends to statewide mask mandates, including mask requirements for schools. Our children have borne the highest cost during this pandemic. Since January 3rd, when students return from winter break, cases in the schools have spiked. Most families I talked to have received multiple notices of close contact status. If that's the norm, one of two things have happened. Either the majority of students have contracted COVID, or at minimum, the majority have been exposed to the virus and not become ill. What it cannot mean is that COVID is lurking and posing a dangerous threat to children if indeed the contact tracing is correct. The extraordinary mitigation strategies are no longer justified. We cannot continue this useless attempt for nearly zero COVID without considering the mental, social, emotional, and academic risks to our kids. I know you've sent a benchmark, but the benchmark is useless. It's time for this district to consider the side effects of COVID mitigation that actually may be worse than the mandate's placebo effect. COVID mitigation is not on the agenda tonight. I know many trustees are tired of discussing it. Parents are tired of a pointless mask mandate. Our kids deserve a step back from the fear and a restoration of the childhoods they deserve. We can show our kids how to come up with forward-thinking creative solutions to the issues we face. We can respect families and teachers who are pro-mask, and we can respect families who are past ready for the mandate to end. The idea that the only way to protect the vulnerable is to force everyone to wear masks is outdated. The district stands ready to ask taxpayers for additional funding this spring. The district should similarly stand ready to be accountable for ending this mask mandate.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Tabor. Do we have any more public comments?
No other hands are raised at this time.
Okay, thank you. Our second item, 5B, is written correspondence, which is included in the packet. So now, agenda item C, we have reports and announcements. The first item is trustee reports, and I wonder, Rob, could you direct traffic on that since you know the kids?
Well, I know Aubrey's on. She's from Willard. I was going to read her report for her. There's also Noel on, and I'm not sure which school she's from, but Tracy would know.
That's actually Annalise from Big Sky.
Oh, okay. Gotcha.
Yeah.
Annalise from Big Sky, did you want to give your report?
Yeah, I can do that. Second, sorry. So this week at Big Sky, Big Sky has been having lots of fun activities. Keep up the selling crushed sodas for Valentine's Day. Sodas will cost $1 and will be sold in the student commons every day until the 11th. Sodas will be delivered during student third period on the 14th, and all of our profits will go to Camp Make a Dream. The choir students will be selling singing Valentines in main hall next Wednesday and Thursday for $5. They will include a song of Valentine and either chocolate or flowers. These will be delivered during classes on Monday, February 14th, and parents are also welcome to order them for their children. If you would like to order one for your child, please email Nancy Labby. HOSA also wants to help everyone express their appreciation this week. A table will be set up in main hall with free cards for student and staff to send to one another. Stop by the table, pick out a card, provide the recipient's name and birth period, and HOSA will do the rest. On February 2nd, Big Sky hosted a blood drive. We collected 36 usable units of blood and had 32 new donors. Big Sky MTSS has implemented a new intervention to tardiness called the sweep. Staff members jumped in to sweep up tardy students, gather them in the commons, collect data, i.e. the name, grade level, and reason for tardiness, and provide a short educational lecture on the merits of being on time and then return them to their classes. We had 32 students and will run another sweep this week. We are already seeing less and less students in the hallways during instructional time, and we can't wait to watch and report the number of students late for class drop as we continue this intervention. Big Sky MTSS is currently developing focus groups in response to our student survey to meet during advisory on February 24th. We are excited to report on the information we gather as well as the potential response in the form of continuous improvement of our internal practices. Last week, Big Sky hosted the Western AA Divisional Wrestling Tournament. State wrestling will be in Billings this weekend, while state swimming will be held in Kalispell. Speech and debate travels to the national qualifiers in Kalispell. Good luck to our wrestlers and swimmers. Big Sky Basketball will host Sentinel for JV varsity girls and boys action today, and then we'll meet up with Bu on Friday. We will honor Big Sky alumni in 1988 to 1989 Gatorade Player of the Year and Lake Roush with the presentation of a new banner at the start of our girls varsity game. Coming up, we have future Eagle Night planned during the Big Sky Girls' Basketball as we host Bu on Friday, February 11th. Dogland Tinkle, Big Sky Alumni Assistant Lady Grizz Coach and two-year awardee of the Gatorade Player of the Year will be at Big Sky on Tuesday, February 22nd to receive her new banner. And that is all I have.
Thank you, Annalise. I've got Aubrey's report. She's on the call, but because of sore throat, unable to really talk very loud, so she asked that if we read the report for her, so I'm going to do that. And Aubrey's from Willard. So this month, we begin nearing spring break. As we begin nearing spring break, Willard will undertake its fourth learning block out of five. On Friday, a small group of students will be taking advantage of the winter weather by traveling to Lubrec for a cross-country ski trip. The trip will take place for the entire school day. Thus, those participating are required to be caught up in passing in all of their other classes. Tuesday, the 15th, we will say our farewells to another seven students as they have fulfilled their graduation requirements. We're starting an exciting new chapter in their lives. Following day, we will be starting this session's classes as well as welcoming 20 new students to the school to fill the slots of our 2022 early spring graduates. That's all I have to report. Apologize for the briefness. The weeks leading up to the break tend to be a null period regarding activities at Willard. Then I also have a report from Hellgate High School from Brogan. Here's the winter update for Hellgate High School this week. At Hellgate, we are having Spirit Week to lead up to the Golden Goat Spirit War against Sentinel. The fun day themes include Anything But a Backpack Day, Red and Gold Day, Beach Out, and a day with our Golden Goat theme and shirts. Going for the Golden Goat Winter Olympics is their theme. National Honor Society has been hard at work planning a semi-formal dance on Saturday, February 12th. Flagship programs through winter and spring will be starting on February 14th. Flagship is providing many programs, including new ones. Flagship is free for all Hellgate students. Our winter athletes have had an exciting week coming up to the state tournaments for both boys and girls wrestling, boys and girls swimming, and the national qualifiers for speech and debate. German National Honor Society has been hosting multicultural international celebrations at lunch. Most recent gathering included a potluck of French food and a viewing of the movie Ratatouille. Student government is also holding a fundraiser for the Pavarello Center on Thursday, February 10th. Student government is holding a freezing for a reason. Representatives from each class at Hellgate have been raising money in competition with other members of their class. The volunteers for each class who raise the most money will take a quick dip in a trough of water in the Hellgate Courtyard. Hellgate students had a stellar performance at All City High School Poetry Slam. Newest club at Hellgate is the Astronomy and Astrophysics Club. Students have been loving the club so far. And Hellgate Curling Club has been working with Glacier Icerink for a Learn to Curl event on Saturday, February 12th. It will also be highlighting other winter sports that are currently being showcased at the Winter Olympics.
Thanks for reading those, Rob. Are we sure Daisy's not on from Sentinel?
I'll take a look right now.
I don't see her.
Okay, and nobody from CD Swan?
Doesn't look like it.
Well, they show up later. If you see them, I don't quite know how to do that. Let us know, and we'll let them do their report. So the next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. The consent agenda today, under Finance and Maintenance, includes a ratification of out-of-district attendance agreement. It says secondary, so that means it's the full board. That's on page 16. Do we have a motion to approve the attendance, the out-of-district attendance agreements, agreement? Moved by trustee Decker, second by trustee old person. All trustees in favor, please signify by raising their hand. And that is unanimous as all trustees present. The second consent agenda item is not one. Okay. Eight is old business. So in old business, we're going to start with Finance, Operations, and Maintenance. And Rob's going to show us the organizational structure, which we will vote to approve tonight or not approve. Thanks.
Tracy just asked us in the chat about the superintendent's report. I don't know if...
Oh, there it is. Sorry. Let's go ahead and, no, I guess we're good. Let's go ahead with the superintendent report.
Okay, so I just have three things to report this evening, actually four, if you'll allow me just a little bit more time. But number one, just a really quick COVID updates. You can see the COVID summary data on our website. Last week, at the end of the week, we had 195 positive cases, K-12. That is down from a couple of weeks ago. I think our high was mid-January when we had over 500 positive cases in that middle of January. So we're, last week at the end of the week, we're at 195 positive cases for the week. So that's encouraging. We still are dealing with some staffing issues at a variety of schools. And we're doing the best we can to hold that together and staff as much as we can from central office, but it has been a little bit taxing. So we are hoping that the county numbers will continue to fall because we do know our cases are directly tied to how many cases there are in the county. So hoping that we continue to see that decline. Number two, just a bit of information for the board. Pat and Burley are going to put together a facilities use committee, and that will include hopefully a few board members, but also some members of our community. We've asked for representation from the city and the county. We've also asked for representation with regards to economic development. So that's kind of the folks that will be on the committee. Pat is lining up an agenda for a meeting to happen either the last week of February or the first week of March. And so if you're interested, we obviously can't have all board members participate, but we're maybe looking for two or three board members. If you're interested, I would reach out to Diane just to make sure she knows that you're interested in serving. If it looks like we have more than that, maybe we could put everyone's hat, naming a hat and draw, but we're looking for two to three board members to serve on the facility use committee. Two other announcements, really quick ones. A couple of bright spots for this week. You may have watched the Olympics last night and saw that we had a student that was former student that was participating in the Olympics. That was Chris Stevens' daughter, Darian Stevens, and she participated last night, represented the USA in big air competition. Really exciting because during the coverage, they flashed Chris and her family at home on their couch watching her and supporting her. So it was really great, and they talked about how Chris was a principal, a school principal. So just really exciting for all of us to see that and just great to have that connection with the Olympics. And then the other bright spot this week, National School Counselor Appreciation Week. We have a lot of dedicated school counselors and school psychologists and social workers that all fall in that category of support for our kids. And so we just congratulate those folks, welcome them in our district. Make sure that everyone knows that if they've got a favorite counselor that they talk with frequently to just say thank you this week because it's National School Counselor Week. That's all I had for my superintendent's report.
Okay, thanks, Rob. Thanks, Tracy, for catching us there. Me, catch me. So now we're to item eight, old business, finance, operations, and maintenance. Would you like to go ahead, Dr. Watson?
I will go ahead. Can you see that? Okay, on your screens? This is an older version, the one that's, apologize, the one that's in your board packet. I made a couple of small changes. It's on page 18 of your board packets. I referenced the Assistant Superintendent of K-8 as Assistant Superintendent pre-K-8. And I just wanted to make you aware that it looks very similar to what we talked about in the last meeting. I did want to provide just a little bit more detail. You know, I've been highlighting quite a bit the the need for a high school assistant superintendent. I just wanted to outline the job duties a little bit more, just so you all were aware of what that person would be working on. Obviously, the Assistant Superintendent for the elementary schools and the middle schools also is an important position, but that's something that we've, you know, we've been had in place for quite a while. This Assistant Superintendent specifically for 912 is something that's relatively new. Right now, our current Assistant Superintendent, Russ Lodge, serves all grade levels, but I know it's a stretch, and he does as much as he can for both levels. But what I'm recommending is to have two different Assistant Superintendents so they can focus a little bit more on their particular level. So when you think about an Assistant Superintendent for high school, here are some of the things that I would expect that person might work on. You know, we've talked about various policies and procedures this year that are specific to high school, and that's something that that person would continue to work on or just, you know, outlining our policies as they relate to high school and revising the policies that we have in place and the procedures for high school programming. We've got quite a bit of a variety of programming, not only AP programs, but IB programs. There's also academies that we've introduced at several of our schools, like the Health Science Academy at Big Sky. We've got some district-wide high school programs like Ag Ed and our auto program that are district-wide. They just deserve a little bit of support and some oversight. There is a variety of programs we have that are specific to high school, like dual enrollment. I was found out yesterday that they have a record number of our kids enrolled in dual enrollment programs through Missoula College this semester, which is just really encouraging to hear that there's still growth in that dual enrollment program. That requires some oversight and some help and some management. Montana Digital Academy as well as workforce development. That's something we continue to get asked about from our Chamber of Commerce, and it would be great to have somebody that could help focus on that workforce development. Oversight in our activities program, I mentioned this last time, but with the addition of new programs like baseball into our activities program, it requires some oversight and some coordination at the district level. Then there's just a couple of real specific things we're working on this year. Support for curriculum work. We were working with the high school teachers on science curriculum this year. We'll be moving to social studies soon, and although we have curriculum folks helping with that, it'd be nice to have a little bit of oversight from the Assistant Superintendent level as we talk about those important curriculum review cycles. Course catalog, since we moved to Infinite Campus as our student management system, we found out that a lot of our courses are labeled differently in each school, and it's just going to require some coordination to clean all that up. And that's a, it sounds like a small project, but it's pretty big, and it requires some coordination and oversight. And then probably most important to me would be the coordination with our feeder schools outside of our school district. So I think many of you are aware of this, but I'll just state it in case you're not. There's a majority of students at Big Sky don't actually attend one of our elementary schools or our middle schools. So last I heard, it could be in the neighborhood of 60% to 70% of the students that are at Big Sky don't attend one of our elementary schools. And what that means is that we just have to do a lot more coordination with those rural feeder schools. Big Scott, not only Hellgate Elementary, but Lolo and Bonner. And this particular person could be a key player in just bridging that gap between those schools and our high schools and making sure that we've got a smooth transition. So that's another duty that I definitely see this person working on. I talked to you last time about growth and enrollment at the high school and why I felt this was a good time for us to add this position. Over the last two years, we've seen growth at the high school. And just to put it in perspective, if you go back to the numbers in the fall of 2019, which was right before COVID, and compare it with the fall of 2021, we've grown by 228 students at the high school level. So that is tremendous growth, and we've added teaching FTE along with that growth at the high school level, but we know that we just need more support. And then the last thing I'll say is just the most important thing that this position will do is support our principals and our school staff as they do their important work. And it just, we need, you know, we need more oversight in terms of folks supporting principals. I mean, Russ does a great job, but he has to support, you know, 18 different principals, and that can be pretty taxing at times. COVID's kind of shed a light on all of our shortcomings in terms of staffing. I mean, when we have a principal that's out, especially at elementary school, it's usually Russ or somebody else from central office that's subbing for that principal, and that's had to happen quite a bit because at elementary schools, they don't have an assistant principal. So if a principal is out, it requires one of us to sub, which is fine. It's just, it's been pretty taxing in terms of other things that we're trying to get done. So these are some of the reasons I think it's the right time to change the structure. I also mentioned last time this being cost neutral. I did go back just to clarify that and added up some of the position savings that we've had in the last two and a half years, and the position savings is more than it would cost to add this position. So I feel comfortable in saying that it would be cost neutral in terms of impact to our general fund budget. So with that, I would just pause and see if you have any questions for me, and I'll stop sharing my screen.
There you go. Mike Gale, do you have a question for Rob?
Yeah, I just want to make sure we're clear that I'm all for both of these positions. It makes total sense to me. I mean, it's, and Rob, you and I have had some great discussions already on the workman's comp issue because that's kind of my bread and butter. But just so we're all on the same page, it potentially is going to be two to three years before that e-mod factor gets down and those potential savings are to come into those premiums. You know, we're just going to have to support that position until we're going to see those cost savings. And frankly, we could see those workman's comp rates go up for another year or so until we start to see a decline once we put that culture back into effect there. So just so we're, you know, we're understanding that we are going to have to fund that position for a while before we start seeing cost savings there.
Thank you, trustee Gale. I had forgotten to mention the workers' composition. That was another new position. And I know Pat has some ideas around funding for that position. Pat, do you want to talk about that briefly?
Yeah, you bet. And trustee Gale is exactly right. It's a, in terms of the premium, it can take time for four years to get off of our five-year look back in terms of that premium set. In terms of funding the position, we participate in the state program, not the state program through the Montana School Boards Association. And it's essentially a member program where all the members are school districts. And as a participant, we've received work comp credits over the years, and you've probably seen them for those that have been around on our general fund budget projections where we've utilized those work comp credits to reduce premium and thereby help balance our budget. And so going into this next year, we do have a little over 70,000 in work comp credit that we could apply in support of that position, which would cover it for over a year. But certainly to trustee Gale's point, there is a time delay for efforts to result in reduced claims. And so improved safety resulting in reduced claims and reduced premium. Part of the good news is that it may be a quicker turnaround than normal. And oddly enough, just the fact that we had some time during COVID where we weren't in the building as much and where we were working remotely as a group resulted in a year and a half of lower claims. So we can take advantage potentially of that that short stretch and hopefully put together a couple more good years and support a reduction. And the e-mod factors I mentioned last time was 1.44. And if we're at one, then our premium would be about $250,000 less this year. So there's significant room within that premium to improve. So hopefully that will be the progress that we see. Thanks for the question.
Trustee Havens? Oh, you're just waving? Do we have any other trustee questions for Dr. Watson on the trustee Aggers?
I'm just curious, Rob, is the correct split for this position, 912 and K-8? And you have four schools, four principals under one Assistant Superintendent, and then what, 14 under the other? Is that responsibility-wise, the correct split?
Yeah, it's a great question. We've debated that a couple of different ways. There's actually five schools under the high school Assistant Superintendent, if you count Willard and Seeley. In addition, each one of the high schools has two assistant principals, so they're all administrators. So there's quite a few administrators that are supervised by the secondary one. The other thing to consider, I think, is the way our budget splits. And so statewide, you know, we've got a K-8. The state recognizes us as two different districts, our K-8 district and our high school district. And that split is at eighth grade to ninth grade. So that's kind of why we landed where we did. But I do appreciate the question because we did debate that a little bit on where to put middle school.
Any other trustee questions? He's seeing none. The recommendation is that the administration recommends that the trustees approve the attached document, which outlines the revised organizational structure to include the additions of two new positions in the structure. Assistant Superintendent for high school and Coordinator for the Workers' Comp Program. Do we have a motion? Moved by trustee Havens? Do we have a second? Second by trustee Gale? It's been moved and seconded to accept administrative recommendation. Do we have any trustee discussion on the org chart, just opinions that aren't necessary questions? Trustee Decker?
Sure. I think one of the major things that a board does is hire the superintendent and interest that person to organize the district in the way that they propose to support all of the different responsibilities that are here. I'm sure that we'll hear as this goes forward how well it's working out. And I would love, as we do go forward with it also, to hear about how it's impacting principals. I love the idea that the principals need more support. That's such a key role. And the role of high school principal is really different than that of an elementary principal in a lot of important ways. And so I'll really look forward to hearing back how the principals, and then by extension, the teachers in those buildings are supported differently by this new organization.
Thanks, trustee Decker. Any other board comments? I would just like to say it's always been so important to me that we support the K-8 schools because we have large numbers in all our high schools. It is a majority at Big Sky, but it's still a significant number at Sentinel and Hellgate. And so to let those principals reach out to a central administrator rather than to the principal of the high school that they're assigned to, I think it's a really important role for M C P S. Trustee Havens?
I just wanted to give a quick...
I just wanted to give a quick shout out to, shout out to Russ Lodge, who's been doing all of those things that we've divided up into two different positions. It's an incredible amount of work and it's been amazing to see you work on all that stuff, Russ. So many thanks to you.
Any other board comments? Okay, we have a second motion. Do we have public comment?
No hands are raised at this time.
Okay, thank you. So it's been moved and seconded that we accept the administration recommendation. All trustees in favor, please signify by raising your hand. That is unanimous as to all trustees present. Thank you. Our next item is nine. New business to approve the CSCT agreement. Pat McQ?
Thank you. So we've been operating or providing CSCT services in our schools for, for two decades anyway. And the services are provided, there are mental health services that are provided through mental health service providers and those services are funded with federal Medicaid reimbursement. And the, uh, the, um, there's typically a match that's required for in, in, to participate in these types of programs. And the match that, that we've been using in the state of Montana has been in the form of a soft match by school districts, which means the schools provide the space, the internet, the computers, the telephone and that type of thing. And then the providers are able to offer those services. The use of a soft match was disallowed and communicated to DPHHS. And DPHHS, Department of Public Health and Human Services, funded the match for a year. And, uh, and then the state legislature provided bridge funding that ran out in December. And the legislature also directed OPI and DPHHS to, to formulate a plan. And, um, and they, they did so. And, uh, part of the plan is, is in the form of the agreement that's attached, beginning on page 19. It's a intergovernmental transfer agreement and IGT agreement. And essentially the agreement is a cooperative interagency agreement between school districts, OPI and DPHHS to provide for the, um, well, primarily for the match, but also for the funding of the match and how the match is then, then circulated, if you will, between those agencies. And so the, the, the effect of the requirements under the, this agreement, really beginning on page two of the agreement is that DPHHS will notify OPI of the match requirements based upon services provided. OPI will communicate that match to school districts. School districts will then remit the match in hard dollars to OPI. The match is calculated based upon the federal reimbursement is calculated by, including all the federal reimbursements that are available. Then, um, uh, DPHS remits their share, which is the reimbursement to OPI along, to the school districts through OPI, along with the, the match that was submitted by school districts. And then school districts remit that payment to the actual service provider. The portion of the match, um, which can be up to the total amount of the, of the money that's remitted by the school district can be retained as an indirect cost retention, provided that indirect cost relates to, um, to actual indirect costs related to providing those, those services. The, the, with the caveat that those funds cannot be used for future payment of the match. And, and so there's some accounting, um, recall, uh, guidance that's provided by OPI in terms of where those funds are, are deposited and retained. And essentially they'd be used by our district to offset other expenditures so that we can use expenditures within different funds, including the general fund to commit to that match. It, it kind of becomes a, a pretty, uh, circuitous ma- uh, um, map of, of, of analysis reports and funding. But it's, it's, uh, uh, through this effort of, of OPI and DPHHS that we're able to continue to receive federal reimbursement for those services in our schools. And so, um, we're asking the board to, to authorize the IGT agreement that's attached. This is a, a document that's been reviewed by school attorneys, including our attorneys. It's been, it's been advanced and presented to school districts for feedback and comment. And, 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 and now for us to request reimbursement, um, we need to have board approval and signature on the document by February 11th. So, um, it's a bit of a short timeframe, but it's, it's really involved quite a bit of effort and work to make this, this come about primarily through OPI and through DPHS, HS. Hopefully that is as clear as mud, but happy to answer any questions.
Go on, go ahead.
A little loss in the indirect. So was that like what we have been providing in space? We can now sort of account and detach from the hard money? Is that what that meant?
It is. So, um, we, we've participated in quite a number of, of meetings and, and, and trainings with, with OPI and DPHHS. And, and it, it does mean that. And so, um, what, what we would develop in support of our indirect costs would be really dollars against items who are identified as indirect costs in the past, including space, including, um, support for that space, which would be internet services, utilities and, and the like. The, the main effort in this IGT is that the funds that, that are considered the state match through the school district are not federal funds. And so we can still, um, essentially benefit from indirect cost support for the program. But we, we have to use non-federal funds to support the hard match for, in order to receive those federal reimbursements.
Any other trustee questions? Trustee Decker?
Without getting too much into detail, how dramatically different is this process? Is, are we in the business of sending funds to OPI and then passing them on in that direct? Like, is that, is that something that we have done for other purposes in the past? Is that a usual thing?
It's, it's not. It's not very, it's not very typical. And it's, um, it's a creative solution to the problem is what I would say. And, and the, um, the types of services that are offered or the model changed as well. And so they used to bill in increments of 15 minutes and now the billing is on a per DM basis. And, and so the, the model has the potential to affect how services are delivered. And, um, and partly because you could bill in 15-minute increments without any cap. And, and now there's a day cap and the day can be 30 minutes or the day can be six hours. But the dollar amount is still the same. It's still $96 per day. And so, um, what it, what it may result in is, and, and I think it's still yet to be seen, is just fewer teams. Because for those teams to be effective, they need to be in a school where there are lots of students that qualify for and are, are needing this type of service. So I, I think, uh, you know, the, the agreement is thoughtful in the sense that it's, it's terminable upon 30-day notice. It has some triggers that could result in termination that link back to federal laws, rules, state rules, laws. And, uh, we're all operating, we've been operating on month-to-month agreement with our actual providers, just mutually appreciating the fact that we, uh, we need to be flexible in terms of how we operate. So long answer to your question.
Are there any other trustee questions? Trustee Havens?
So Pat, is this a, um, as temporary a solution as it looks? I mean, it looks, it goes through June 30th? And are we looking to, I mean, are we just waiting for them to kind of figure out a better solution to CSCT and after that? I don't, because we're working on a pretty bare bones CSCT program right now. So this is basically to, to fund the rest of the semester.
You're right. And it's a great question. I think it's, it remains to be seen. So it's, I, I think there are a lot of questions. I think it's, uh, fundamental is how well are we going to be providing services to students that need, the, need those services? And how well does this model, um, meet that, that need? And, um, I think, uh, it, it may be the solution. I don't think it's, it was, uh, ever described as the temporary fix. I think it is the solution for now. But, um, I'm, I'm sure that everybody who's been involved would recognize that there's, that this match or this, this funding piece, um, is maybe not a perfect setup. I think the bigger question will just be how the model has changed and then how that could affect just how, uh, how many students are served. I think that's a question we have. So we'll, we'll see.
Any other trustee questions? So seeing none, we have a recommendation. The administration recommends trustees approve the agreement between DPHHS and OPI for CSCT reimbursement effective January 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2022. Do we have a motion?
Trustee Vicki had a question.
Oh, oh, sorry, Vicki. Go ahead with your question.
Okay. I was just curious of what happens after June 30th?
Yeah, I, I think, uh, um, we, we'll, we'll see because there's typically summer services that are provided through CSCT. And, uh, I think the recognition is that, um, the, uh, the, the funding for the match is going to be tied to the fiscal year, which is June, June 30th. So, um, I anticipate there'll be more conversation for how the program looks going forward into the next fiscal year, including the next, the following summer.
Okay, thanks. Got ahead of ourselves. So I guess we've read the recommendation. Is there a trustee motion on this recommendation? Moved by trustee old person. That's to support, right, Wilena? Support the recommendation?
Yes, and trustee McDonald has her hand up too.
Oh, is it still up there? Okay, thanks. So we have a second from trustee McDonald. It's been moved and seconded to, approve the, the administration recommendation. Is there any board discussion on this item? Seeing none, do we have any public comment?
No hands are raised at this time.
Hey, thanks. So it's been moved and seconded that we approved the administration recommendation. All trustees in favor, please signify by raising your hand. And that's unanimous as all trustees present. So then we'll move on to item, uh, 9A2. To approve the Montana student data privacy agreements for software. Again, it's Pat McQ.
Thanks. So, um, this is really tied to a, a change in, in how these agreements are drafted. The, uh, data privacy agreements have been around a couple of years. As the background mentions, we have a policy that, that, um, adopts these agreements. When we have contracts with software providers or companies, um, that provide, um, educational services over the internet. And the, uh, the primary objective is to ensure the privacy and the confidentiality of, of student data. And, um, and so whenever there's a potential for a student to log in or a student's name to be used, we, we require these, uh, privacy agreements. The IT department has been in the practice of, of vetting any of these services that are looked at by our schools. And then, uh, sending these, our agreement, um, that's, that's supported through this organization to those companies for signature. And, and then only approving or releasing the use of this, these companies, um, when the agreements are in place. And, uh, so the IT department has a nice process and a, a database that they're maintaining of, of approved vendors that, that teachers can use when they're looking to, uh, utilize the service as part of their, um, educational delivery. So, uh, with this change, we want to make sure that, that we're, um, now having board authorization for the district clerk and the board chair to, to sign these agreements. And, and what we would like to be able to do if, if the board approves, this practice is, is to, is to allow the IT department to stamp the signature as long as it's on an agreement that's in the form that's attached to the, the document is, as mentioned, they, they usually review on average one a week. If you look at all of the, all of the, um, um, companies that, that are vetted. And so it's, it's, it would be a tedious process to bring the agreement back to the board every time. So, um, we would look for the board to approve the, the clerk and the chair to, to sign those agreements, um, on behalf of the district.
Do we have any trustee questions for Pat? Uh, there's a trustee Decker?
How long would you anticipate that this sort of approval to go forward in this way would, would exist? Before we would kind of bring it back to take a look at again? Because things, you know, things that are, are and aren't included in here as far as what kinds of data and yada yada. It's a changing world, you know? And so just wondering if we maybe in approving this, we could set a timeframe within which we feel comfortable with what's in there. And then it would be reviewed by our attorney or tech director, or whatever the appropriate people would be at that time?
Yeah, and we could, uh, um, we could put it on a, a cycle like we do with other approvals, I, I think, and, and just have, uh, an annual calendar reminder to approve, uh, those signatures on the, on the agreement. And certainly if the form of the agreement substantially changes, we would be coming back to the board at any rate. But, uh, I doubt it'll change in, in substance. It'll be more of this type of requirement, procedural requirement is what I look at. So, yeah, we can definitely calendar a return visit, much like we do with the multi-district agreement, which is every three years. And I, I think these are signed on an annual basis. But either way, we would want to have a sort of a blanket approval so we could do it on an annual basis.
Any other trustee questions? Okay, seeing none. Um, we have, the administration recommends, recommends trustee approval of the P, DPA in the form attached here too. And trustee authorization for the district clerk and board chair to sign DPA's in the form attached here too. Do we have a motion? Move by trustee Wake. We have a second. Second by trustee Aggers. So it's been moved and seconded to accept administration recommendation. Do we have any board discussion? Seeing none, do we have any public comment?
No hands are raised at this time.
Okay, thank you. So we have a motion on the floor. All trustees in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your hand. And that's unanimous as all trustees present. Next topics, the next several, and Pat, you can just proceed, whatever order you like, or calls for elections.
Okay, thank you. So this is a annual item topics, uh, three and four, um, for a school election, which, uh, the resolution- three and four for a school election, which the resolution authorizes the calling of the school election. And this is a requirement that the board authorized via resolution, the calling of the election, which is the resolution is set forth on page forty and references the required date of the election and, and that the, the board has, has called for that election. So right now we have an elementary election for trustees. There are three open seats. And under topic four, there are an open seat in each of the high school districts A, B, and C. And that resolution is similar to the resolution in the elementary side. It, it's a trustees authorizing the, the election via that resolution.
Do we have any trustee questions? So I'd like to take the two of these separately. The first one is a call for election. The administration recommends trustees approve resolution, resolution two zero two two dash three E. This is elementary only. Do we have a motion? Moved and moved by trustee Abgarras, second by trustee Havens. Do we have any board discussion? Public comment?
No public comment at this time.
Okay, seeing none, all elementary trustees in favor of the resolution, please signify by raising your hand. And that's unanimous as all elementary trustees present. And the second one is the call for the high school elections. The administration recommend, recommends trustees approve resolution twenty twenty-two dash three S for the purpose of electing one trustee from high school district A for a three-year term, one trustee from high school district B for a two-year term, and one trustee from high school district C for a two-year term. Do we have a motion? Moved by trustee Wake. Do we have a second? Second by trustee Mercer. Any board discussion on this item? Seeing none, do we have any public comment?
No public comment at this time.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded to approve this, the resolution, the secondary board. All trustees in favor, please signify by raising your hand. And that's unanimous as all trustees present. Okay, Pat, do you want to go for the next ones?
You bet. Thank you. So also, we're asking the board to authorize resolutions in the elementary and the high school for a general fund levy. And we, at, at this point, don't know the exact amount of the levy because we're in the midst of our second enrollment count, our February enrollment count. Our estimates are over three hundred thousand in the elementary and over five hundred thousand in the high school. This is an annual levy amount for general fund operations. The typically at, at this point, the resolution is, is ensuring a placeholder for the election, for the levy election. We'll be providing the board with more information about, about the levy as we complete the February enrollment count and as we look at the more data relating to the tax impact, the, the intent of intended uses of the levy proceeds, that type of thing. So we'd, we'd like to ensure that we have the resolution in place so that we have the option of running that, that levy election. And, and so we're asking the board to approve both of these resolutions. The one on page forty-two is the elementary and forty-three is, is the high school.
Any trustee questions? Trustee Mercer?
Is it correct that because we're running the trustee ones, there's no really additional administrative cost to the levy ones?
It, it's essentially true. Yeah. When, yeah, that's right.
Any other trustee questions? Seeing none, we'll take these one at a time again. So first, the administration recommends that trustees approve resolution twenty twenty-two dash four E. Do we have a motion from a trustee element, an elementary trustee, trustee of Geras, second by trustee Havens? Is there any board discussion? Is there any public comment?
Not at this time.
Okay, all trustees and elementary trustees in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your hand. And that's unanimous as all elementary trustees present. We also have an administration recommendation to approve resolution twenty twenty-two dash four S. Do we have a motion from any trustee? Moved by trustee of Geras, second by trustee Decker. Is there any board discussion? Seeing none, do we have any public comment?
Not at this time.
Okay, all trustees in favor of the resolution, please signify by raising your hand. And that is unanimous as to all trustees present, except trustee.
No, it's not.
It's not, you know, it's okay, I'm sorry. All right, let's, let's do a roll call vote then. This is the high school secondary resolution twenty twenty-four four. All trustees opposed, please signify by raising your hand or signaling. One, we have Gail. Trustee Gail opposes. Trustee Wake, are you not? And trustee Vogel? I guess I don't actually see your vote. You're good. Okay, all trustees in favor, please signify by raising your hand or speaking.
Vogel has her hand up for yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so that is, let's see, there's ten of us here. So that is nine in favor, one opposed. So the trust, the resolution passes. The next item is personnel negotiation, negotiation and policy. So Mr. Roth's going to make a presentation.
Um, the, well, the first thing that we have, uh, trustee Decker, is just the personnel report. And the personnel report is our standard monthly report for both elementary and high school.
So let's do that one first. We typically don't discuss the personnel report because it involves personnel. Do we have a motion from an elementary trustee to approve the items on the provided for elementary personnel report? Moved by trustee of Geras, second by trustee Decker. Any board discussion? Public comment?
Not at this time.
Seeing none, all elementary trustees in favor of the approving the personnel report, please signify by raising your hand. And that's unanimous as all elementary trustees present. The administration recommends trustee approval of the items on the provided secondary high school personnel report. Do we have a motion? Move by trustee Wake, second by trustee of Geras. Do we have any board discussion? Seeing none, do we have any public comment?
Not at this time.
All trustees in favor of the secondary, approving the secondary personnel report, please signify by raising your hand. And that is unanimous as all trustees present. Okay, Dave, your second item?
Yes, I'm, I'm pleased to say that we reached a tentative agreement with our MM CEO, which are our classified union, represents a little over four hundred of our employees. As you may or may not recall, last spring, we had agreed with the union to extend the terms of the existing three-year contract, which would expire of this June for an additional two years, with the exception of wages. So this year we've met with the union and came to this tentative agreement, which is outlined in your agenda tonight. Some highlights, I, I'm very excited about it. I think it's a very, it was an opportunity for us to really move forward and to recognize the work that our hourly employees do. As you all know, we would not function as a district without our hourly employees. And their workforce is, is critical, not only for organizations, for our students. So this year we came to an tentative agreement that we would raise all of the cells and they're outlined on page fifty-three and fifty-four of the agenda by a dollar ten for any pay grades from step five up through step twenty-one. We came up with what's called a compression for steps one through four. And what that essentially did was to increase our starting wages. So if you were to take a gander on page fifty-three, for example, our starting wages now for pay grade D and E, which is where the bulk of the employees are, has gone up to almost sixteen dollars an hour, fifteen seventy in D, and that's seventeen dollars an hour in E, which is a substantial increase. The compression allowed for a slightly larger increase in those first four cells across the boards greater than a dollar ten, because we wanted to increase our hourly wages. We all know how competitive and difficult it is right now in recruitment. We also know how the rising cost with both inflation and housing cost in Missoula has really affected people. So this allowed us to be very aggressive and increase our starting wages. So Pat came up with that. I think it, it worked out wonderfully. The other thing that I would outline for you is that we also achieved moving a lot of, there's sixty-nine different job categories in the MM CEO. So there were quite a few of those job categories that we also moved. We moved attendance clerks from a, a, up to a higher pay grade. Family resource specialist moved from pay grade D to E. Our LPNs, we went up from pay grade D to pay grade G. And our food prep and cashiers went from pay grade B to pay grade C. The nice thing about this is if you note that these wage increases, the dollar ten wage increase actually takes effect February twenty-eighth approved tonight. We wanted to, it allows us to be aggressive in going out trying to recruit people. And plus, it also sent a powerful message to our hourly employees that are stuck with us through health and this pandemic and have really been doing critical workforce. So with a February twenty-eighth increase for that dollar and ten, then on July first this year, all of the employees would go up what's called a, a step, which would be about another thirty cents or so for each of those. So for most all of our employees, we've seen a dollar forty plus increase this year, just with the disagreement. The other thing I would point out then for the next year, July first, two thousand twenty-three, for the second year of the agreement, the wages would go up by fifty cents. We also agreed to move our custodians who are in pay grade D and apply a fifty cent differential. So next year, those custodians would receive with a step and sell about a dollar thirty or so increase as well next year. So I'd be glad to answer any questions. I, I'd like to point out that on our committee this year, on our negotiation team, trustee Mercer was there and assisted Pat McQ and Amy Chatick were. And I also want to do a monstrous shout out to the MM CEO representative, Sherri Posma, Carleen Hathaway and Cindy Wishard. I, I cannot overstate how zealously they represent their group and how much they stand up for and help and advocate for their group. I can tell you from my standpoint as HR director, I enjoy working with them. They just have the best interest of all, of all of their employees. And it's really always a joy to work with them. So fierce advocates for these things. And I'm, I'm excited. This, I think, moves the direct, the district in the direction we want to be going. So I'd be glad to answer any questions about it.
Okay, are there any board questions for Dave? Really? Well, I'd just like to say, I know this board expressed it as a, as a goal to increase the pay for our lowest paid employees. And I'm so pleased that the board expressed that clearly and that the administration heard that and made it happen. And I think it just shows that we're, that this is working. We're, we're doing what we set out to do. So I'm just really pleased with this. Do we have any more board questions? I guess that was a comment. And so do we have a motion? The administration recommends.
We do have one public comment.
Okay, let me, let's get the motion on the floor. That was my mistake. So that was just questions. Is there any more questions? Oh, Cohen has a question. No question. Okay, the administration recommends trustees ratify the two-year agreement with the MM CEO with appreciation to the district team and the MM CEO team. Do we have a motion? Moved by trustee Havens, second by trustee Mercer. Now, is there any board discussion? Comments? Okay, do we have any public comments?
Yes, we have Carleen who would like to talk.
Oh, great, thanks.
Carleen, go ahead and unmute and spell and speak your name.
Thanks, Paul. Carleen Hathaway, H A T H A W A Y. I just wanted to say thank you, Dave, first of all, for all the kind comments. Sherry and I are on and we appreciate it very much. Thank you, Dave, Pat, Cohen, and Amy for negotiations. I have to tell you, this was a record set for two days of negotiations, even though we weren't doing a whole lot of language. There was still a lot of discussion crammed into two days and a lot of thoughtful processing by everyone. And I really want to express the appreciation of MM CEO on behalf of all of our members for everything we accomplished here and for the recognition of MCPS, the work that the classified employees are doing for the district on a day-to-day basis. I also wanted to share with you very quickly that we did an electronic election this year and it was run by our MFPE field consultant, Melanie Charleston and Kate Tribe, and it came off beautifully. We ran it for five days. We closed it on January thirty-first. And by Fri- the next morning, February first, we had our results in. And I would like to share with you that ninety-four percent of our members voting voted to approve this. And we had over eighty-six percent of our members participate in this. So that should tell you that you hit the mark with this and we can't tell you how much we appreciate it. And the clarification that Dave made that this comes into effect on February twenty-eighth is fantastic. That has never, in my thirty-two years with the district, ever been something that's been presented. So I would just again like to say thank you to MCPS for all your work in doing this and the number crunching and just let you know that it is, it is very much appreciated.
Thank you very much. Um, is there any more public comment?
No other public comment at this time.
Okay, so we have a, a motion and a second, and we've had board comment and public comment. So all trustees in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your hand.
Trustee Vogel said yes.
Yes, thank you. That's unanimous as all trustees present. So with that, we've concluded our agenda. Thank you all very much.
Thanks, everybody.
Thanks.